Okay, let the committee hold from Monday, April 7th, 2025 to order. Your call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedredj.
Here.
All right, so audience comments. Trustee comments. Discussion item one, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one on the agenda tonight is a liquor license request for the BP gas station at 101 South Lincoln Way. You may recall years ago, the BP that was operating had a liquor license and they fell into some disrepair with their site, specifically their car wash. And as they accumulated some fines, we eventually revoked their liquor license for not remedying the situation nor paying their fines as agreed upon. They eventually sold the property and the property is now under new ownership, who has agreed to demolish the car wash. And they're in the process of actually getting bids and everything for that right now. In the meantime, they do want to reopen with beer and wine liquor license as allowed.
Yep. Good.
Good.
Yep. All right, thank you. Item two, Steve?
Item number two is regarding the Orchard Gateway Road Project. You saw that the funds for the road program this year were split under the MFT fund and the capital program. Normally, we pay for our local road program completely out of our capital program, but sometimes we end up using motor fuel tax funds. Part of the reason we did that is because the Orchard Gateway Project, which has a massive federal grant that's going to be funding a significant portion of the over $4 million project, allows us to use certain funding at certain times. So we ended up are going to be using a larger portion of MFT funds for this as well. But what we wanted to point out with this is in order to get that project going, it includes widening of Orchard Gateway in certain sections. That widening puts some of the signage in the area out of our code, basically. So Nathan did an amazing job to try to figure out a way with the local business owners to resolve that, and he's going to walk us through it.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So the sign code has a special section just for the auto mall. It's called the North Aurora Auto Mall Signage District, appropriately enough. And it has different rules for all the signage for the car dealerships out there because they generally have bigger signs and things that are required by the manufacturers. It does not specifically give a setback, so then it defaults to the general signage setback of five feet. If we look at this graphic here, so this is the corner of Hanson and Orchard Gateway, you can see there is the old right-of-way line, and here is our new curb. It's going to widen out the radius a bit there. We're also signalizing this intersection, so the sidewalk has to go over some because there's going to be signal poles and utility cabinets and such there. So the new right-of-way line comes within one foot of the Kia sign. And similarly, on the other side, it will require the moving of the Dodge Jeep Dodge Ram sign over there. The Kia dealership is working with staff to acquire the right-of-way, but one of the things that their attorneys brought up was now our sign is going to be non-conforming, so we either need to move the sign, or we need to get a variance, or a text amendment. Staff thought a text amendment would be the best way to go because we have this special sign district just for the auto mall, so it would insert that little bit of text saying that in the North Aurora Auto Mall Signage District at the corner of Hanson and Orchard, the sign setback can be one foot. So it would apply to just those two corners for the Kia sign and the Jeep Dodge Ram sign. There's no vision triangle or any concerns like that because this intersection is going to be signalized, and the right-of-way acquisition is a very wide corner clip. So, you know, you'll still be stopping up here at a signalized intersection. So it won't block vision, and it will basically make the signs legal.
Yeah, that looks good.
It's fine.
Yep. Looks fine to me.
Looks good.
Okay, so that'll come back in the next meeting for a final vote.
Thank you. All right, item three, Steve, or Chief?
Chief. I'll start with that one. So, thank you, Mayor. So item number three is the police patch redesign. And so with this, about 10 years ago, we redesigned our patch. At the time, the process didn't include a lot of the actual police officers' input. So as we started to change things over the years, and as you all know, Joe's built a very strong camaraderie at the police station, and we have a very high morale right now from what, you know, I've seen. One of the things that we did that is another inexpensive way to team build was there was a lot of grumbles about the old patch because it didn't have Illinois on it, it said North Aurora twice, and they didn't feel like they had a process. So we said, well, why don't we let the officers redesign the patch? So you see, we have the new squad car design, which was designed by the police department, and now with that, they have redesigned a patch, and we're bringing it forward to you for approval tonight, just in the sense that it doesn't need formal approval. We just want to see if you have any concerns. Joe, would you like to talk about the process?
Sure. So it was a long, drawn-out process. It was a collaborative effort between village staff, officers, sergeants, and command staff. And like Steve said, there are a couple issues that might have been caught if people were involved. Like Steve said, no mention of Illinois. There was no American flag. They made comments about the river flowing the wrong way, and it was a whole budget thing. So we hired a graphic designer, everybody put their input in, and we got a bunch of feedback. As you can see now, it includes the American flag, the Berman Tower, the State Street Bridge, and the Fox River at sunset. We wanted a little bit of color to make it pop a little bit, to stand out from other police patches. And like Steve said, we're respectfully requesting the village board to review and approval of the patch.
Sounds good to me.
Looks good to me.
Definitely stands out.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Is that larger than the other patch, or is that?
Same size.
Same size, oh, okay. Yep, looks great.
Very good, good work.
All right. Item four, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is Deer Run Subdivision Concept Plan. As we've been telling the board, we've seen quite an uptick in development of residential areas that have long sat vacant or had started and had just stopped for 10 to 15, 20 years at a time. Deer Run is a perfect example of this. It was approved in concept about 20 years ago by the village board, and it's sat there with no development since. Over the last year or so, there's been a couple people looking at the property, and tonight Nathan's going to take us through someone who's actually submitted a concept. Basically, as you know, the concept review is a simple review. We're not looking at engineering yet or real, like, the final site plans. This is mostly about, this is what was the proposed zoning 20 years ago, this is what the concept would be now. They're trying to get some general feedback to see if they want to move forward with the project.
Okay, so as Steve said, this is Deer Run, so it's the vacant field that is west of Deer Path, south of Mirador, and east of Tanner Trails. It's currently zoned E3. It was approved back in 2008. The original plan, so it was annexed, zoned, had a PUD approved, but nothing was ever built. So there's no infrastructure out there, it's just a cornfield. This was the original plan. Sorry for the kind of grainy quality, that's as digital as things were in 2008, I guess. The shaded lots were 12,000 square foot lots, so it called for 26,000 square foot lots and 47,000, 14,000 square foot lots. It had connections to Bauer and to Stratford Drive up here, and then a connection out to Deer Path. So, you know, as we said, it's been vacant since 2008. The current proposal is from Silverthorn Homes. They are proposing to reconfigure the subdivision into two sections. So the outer perimeter section that abuts Mirador and Tanner Trails, they are proposing traditional single-family lots with 10,000 square foot minimums. The inner portion in here, they are proposing an active adult, senior, single-family lots. These are smaller lots, 6,000 square foot minimums, but would be serviced and maintained by the association. So similar to what got built in Lincoln Valley, if you recall.
To like ranches?
Yeah, and we'll have them come up and give you some of the details on the product type. They would also be adding in some amenities, so they're proposing to add a clubhouse here. To, you know, get this approved, they would have to amend the annexation agreement, amend the PUD, and rezone from E3 to R1. Here's some of the pictures of their product, and if you want, gentlemen, if you want to come on up and tell the board a little bit about your company and what products, what the products you build. So that there's some pictures of the outside, there's some pictures of the inside.
Good, I don't have to try to show you my bit. Hey, everybody, I'm Jim Work, owner, founder of Silverthorn Homes, we're based out in Sycamore. I'm a Chicago guy, grew up here in the suburbs. We, as far as the product, obviously Nathan already showed you the plan, we've worked with Nathan for a little while on this, just wanted to find out, as Nathan said, if this is something worth going forward with. You can see in the photos, our traditional, single-family homes, pretty representative of what we would build, whether, and I know not everybody loves it, but the farmhouse style or down below the Williamson. And then you could see the two renderings there, those are renderings that we had done of smaller ranch plans, active adult-type product, as Nathan said, kind of maybe similar to what you saw in Lincoln Valley, small ranches. The lots are not big because I've got a couple friends around the country that do it, and it sounds like people just don't want larger lots to take care of, frankly. We do build a lot of ranches, our company pretty much is 50/50 between young families that have had a third, fourth child, they're looking for their second or third home, or empty nesters that are downsizing, and then the number one complaints we get is, we love your ranch homes, but we don't want to take care of the yard. So that was the concept for this. We didn't want to introduce any townhomes or anything like that. We've tried to be respectful of the neighbors. If we move forward, we'll have a community neighbor review meeting, you know, meet the neighbors and try to alleviate any concerns ahead of time. But we tried to, on only the outside of the perimeter of it, respect the neighbors and put similarly sized lots in there. In the core of it there, you can kind of see the smaller area with the smaller lots for the active adult, and then a clubhouse lot over there as well. There would be a clubhouse, we haven't decided if that would just be the active adult or the entire community.
I have a question. Nathan keeps circling that small little rectangle in the middle, and what's between, what are you going to build between the outer periphery and that section there? Is that the bigger homes or bigger lots there?
That's the detention pond, the big one there. That would be the clubhouse.
No, this is, this is that C-shaped section between the outer perimeter and that center...
In the middle, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of the core I was trying to describe, those would be the smaller lots.
What he's circling, yes, but beyond that, between that and the outer perimeter...
Those are the larger lots.
No, he means just across the street from where the道is.
Yeah, yeah, go across the street. That section is...
Right there, there you go.
Next one.
Yeah, yeah, the section. What's in that section?
Those are still the 52... I'm going to try, but in the middle there, where he's at, if he goes over to those Y-shaped lots and then down, Nathan, those are all the 52-foot wide, we made those a little bit deeper.
You have to speak into Mike, I had a hearing.
Those are, those are the 52-foot wide lots that are the 6,000 square foot.
So everything off of this street in the center portion, this loop street, would be the smaller lots, and then everything, both sides of the street off of this street would be the larger lots.
Wait a minute, so both sides of the street are going to be larger?
Both sides, correct.
So you have the bigger houses? Okay, so...
That's good.
So how many houses total?
There's 70, 71 singles, the larger, sorry, I don't want to give you the wrong number, 71, single-family, larger lots, and then 42 of the smaller.
Okay.
75.
75. Sorry. He does the counting.
75 total?
I just have to get up here and talk.
75 of the larger lots, 42 of the smaller.
Okay.
Originally, it was going to be like 65?
Originally, it was 47, 14,000, and 26, 12,000.
Yeah, that's a lot more.
Yeah. I think having access off Deer Path is very important. I know that was, that was kind of in here about maybe, maybe not, but I think that absolutely is a must. Otherwise, it's an interesting idea. Are there any communities like this that you're aware of that, like, in the area or surrounding communities, or?
All of the larger lots are similar to everything else we build, Elgin, Naperville, Plainfield.
But like, having like a mixed community, is that...
I have a couple friends around the country that have done this. That's honestly where I got the idea from, and they've done a mix, and it's worked out pretty good, for the same reasons I stated, where somebody comes in and they like the homes, they like what we build. We are, I should have said this at the beginning, but we're semi-custom home builders, so we build a fair amount of homes, but it's me, and I make this joke, it's me and 42 of my friends that...
Sure.
We've gotten fairly decent size, but we still make modifications, and, you know, we're not Polty, we're not Lennar, it's me and everybody else. So we do, it's not cookie cutter, is what I'm getting at, so our architecture's pretty good.
How wide is the lots, or are they back up to the current homes there? Are they 80s?
Those are 80s, 90s, and I think the most narrow one, if you zoom in, yeah, 80-foot along the outside.
And then how deep are they?
About 130-foot deep on the normal square lots.
You said the inside ones are 52 feet?
52-foot wide on the inside, 127 to 150, where the smaller ones would back up to the larger ones. We try to make those a little bit deeper, just to give people a little bit more of a buffer.
Very thoughtful, yeah. I think there's a need for ranches, small, or, right? Because, like Lincoln Valley over there...
Yeah, I mean, they sold out immediately, so if you look at the zoning map here, Mirador is R1, so they have 10,000 square foot minimums. Tanner Trails is E3, so those are 14,000 square foot minimums. So it would, it would be more like these lots, more like the Mirador lots versus the Tanner lots.
I think it's great.
What's the price point of those, the typical home that would back up to?
I don't want to give you the wrong answer on the smaller product, because we haven't built that specifically on a smaller lot, but it would reduce our costs to get it, you know, affordable, not, I mean, affordable's kind of a joke anymore, but...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, our current single-family homes would probably be between 450 and 650 on the outer ring, so I would anticipate the smaller ranches. But what I found interesting, and Mark, your comment about ranches, we have a little joke in the office, we're the ranch builder. A lot of the big builders, Lennar, MI, those guys, the lot two stories may not even have a ranch plan. If they do, it's kind of the forgotten plan, nobody wants. We focus on a lot of ranches. So we do have people, while we're trying to hit, you know, a price point that people can afford to get into it. We've also seen people downsize out of a 5,000 square foot house in Naperville here, and they put Viking appliances and all these things in a, you know, 16-inch square foot ranch, which is great for property values and things like that, but I will let our buyers make those decisions, obviously.
Are you doing basements in the ranches as well?
Yeah, yeah. I should say, just, you know, in case it ever comes back at me, that, you know, if a customer requests a slab because they've had a bad experience with a basement, we do that, but we do that like once or twice a year, you know, when the situation arises. We offer them with basements standard.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it fits there great.
Yeah. Interesting way you light it out, for sure.
Any feedback at all about the clubhouse or lot size or anything like that? You know, as a smaller company, we have to make a pretty sizable investment to push one of these through. We don't have the deep pockets Lennar and Polty does, so anything you can give us for feedback, anything with, were to make it back to you guys that you would want to change?
Just to me, I live out in Tanner Trails, I know the rub's going to be the houses at, back up to the current houses, you know, so it seemed like you made a pretty good attempt. You know, most of those lot lists, I think, are about 80, 80 feet across, so I mean, I think that's a good transition. You have a whole street, both sides, with, you know, upscale home, if you will, and then inside you have something a little different, and, you know, there's a need for that as well, so, yeah.
I like the idea of a clubhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pictures of your home look nice, the ones you showed there.
Yeah, and not to knock Lincoln Valley, but, you know, we are semi-custom, you can hopefully see from the architecture, we try to put a little bit more into the front of our homes, so...
Yeah, I noticed.
While they may, as you said, Mayor, the upscale on the outside, we're hoping that the interior actually looks just as nice when we're completed with them.
I'm sure, yeah. But that's what the neighbors, everybody sees, you know, when it backs up to their house or right down the street, so, yeah. We good?
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
Carry on.
Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. All right, lastly, item five, Steve?
Thank you. Item number five is our third review, traditionally of our draft budget process. So as you know, we start with a budget overview. The second meeting, we discuss the budget at length, where we go through pretty much every fund and go through our significant purchases. This is the traditional review in early April, where we do another, changes based on comments made, changes based on finalizing numbers that we are getting quotes on during the process. And so what Jason will do is he'll walk us through that, show you the changes that are going to be in the final draft budget. Also, given the fact that we understand that the grocery tax and the water rates are a significant thing for the community, we wanted to also put a little more information on those in this presentation tonight, in case we're in any questions. With that, Jason's going to walk us through the third review.
All right, thank you. So we had a couple changes to the revenues in the budget, and really they're just focused on the TIFs. We have the final EAV numbers from Kane County, so the TIF revenue numbers, we're going to drop a little bit just based off those final EAV numbers. So on the Route 31 TIF, we're putting the revenue from 830,000 to 785,500. And then in the United TIF, we're bringing it from 1,630,000 to 1,544,000. And then similar, because of, we're reducing the revenue within the TIFs, we're also reducing the transfer that was between the TIFs down as related in that drop of revenue. On the expenditure side, in the general fund, we added $3,000 for the new cloud permit code enforcement module. On the police department side, we're reducing 13,335 for the Mark 43 software, so we've got a better price on that one. As I mentioned, the Route 31 TIF, we're reducing that transfer because of the reduction in revenue. On the capital projects fund, we're adding $20,000 for the Route 31 road diet engineering. We're also adding 29,000 that was approved earlier tonight for the public works building commissioning, and then we're adding 126,000, so bringing 50,000 to 176 for the police department RTUs, rooftop units. We have $100,000 budgeted this year, it's not going to be spent because of it, so we're moving that money into the following year, and rather than doing a couple units, we're doing all five next year. And then on the vehicle equipment replacement fund, removing $40,000 for backup servers because we're trying to purchase those this year, so we don't need to carry that forward. So just as a result, the general fund, we actually, the total change went up $10,000 to the 31,665. There were no changes actually to the Route 31 TIF and United TIF, basically just because whatever we reduce that revenue by, we reduce the expenditure, the transfer by the same amount, so no change there. Capital projects actually decreased an additional 175,000 from those RTU units and the police commissioning, and then the vehicle and equipment fund actually increased $40,000 because of taking those backup servers out. Now, moving on to the grocery tax, as we've mentioned in the past, the state will eliminate the grocery tax come January 1st, 2026, so when you go buy groceries, it's not part of the normal sales tax anymore on groceries, but local municipalities do have the option to continue the tax past January 1st. So again, this is not going to be a new tax, it's a tax we're currently paying right now. It's just we need to put something on the books, whether or not we want to continue that past. So we're not going to be taxing people twice, because one goes away, one starts, there's no change there. One thing to point out, though, the local grocery tax is paid both by residents and non-residents, unlike, you know, possibly increasing a property tax, it only hits residents. Anybody who buys groceries within the village would pay this tax, so it's kind of spread between people who live here and who don't. The grocery tax will affect municipalities differently, because we can't look at, you know, some municipalities might not have a large grocery store presence, so they might just say, well, we're not going to pass it because it really doesn't affect us, because we don't really have a grocery store. Where us, we are very dependent on, you know, Woodman's, a Target, we have a pretty significant grocery base here, and I think we get into it on the next slide, but the grocery tax is estimated, based on the numbers we have right now, being 600,000 and 750,000 annually that the village collects within grocery tax. So it is a significant amount of money that we're looking at potentially going away from the budget if we were to not enact this tax. Non-home rule communities are really limited on our revenue sources. You know, when we look at property taxes every year, we're limited by PTAL, so most we can do for, you know, increasing our property tax levy is CPI or 5%, whichever is less, and similar to, you know, home rule communities, where if they choose that, they could say, we're not going to do the 1% grocery tax, but instead, we're just going to put on a, you know, 1/4% home rule sales tax, and we'll just get it a different way. We're kind of limited as to where that money comes from versus some of the other communities where they can just kind of find other ways to get that tax money back. And then the one thing to be pointed out is, at any point in time, say revenues are good, or we have a new revenue source, or our sales tax comes in higher than expected, or we start increasing, you know, initial car dealerships or something, the board can actually repeal that tax and just say, we're taking away that grocery tax because we don't need it. So once we put it on, or once we agree to it, it's not like we're stuck with it forever, we can always make the decide, that decision later in the year to take it away. I mentioned how much sales tax means to us, and one thing that the strong sales tax, as we've seen it increase over the years, is it's allowed the village not to take the full property tax levy each year. You know, if you go look back at the three, last three tax levies, in 2022, we could have increased the property tax by up to 5%, because CPI was over 5%, and we took a 0%. 23, we could have done another 5%, we did 2 and 1/2. In this past year, we could have gone up 3, 3.4%, and we did 2 and 1/2%. So because we have this additional tax money, you know, the sales tax money, we've been able to keep our property tax levy down for this upcoming budget year. The property, the grocery tax doesn't really affect us as much this upcoming year, because, as I mentioned, it's effective January 1st, 2026, so it really affects the last few months of this upcoming budget year. So this year, we're only budgeting $250,000 of grocery tax money coming in, but then when you look at the following year, that's when we could see up to the 600,000. If we didn't pass it, we could probably get by with this current year. What we'd probably have to do is, you know, we have that $400,000 capital transfer in there every year, we'd probably have to reduce that down to $150,000 by taking that money away. But then going forward into other years, we'd probably have to look at other personnel or operating requests, just to make sure that, you know, taking away that money going forward every year, like, and then it compounding, there's probably going to be some changes that we'd have to make to the budget going forward. So I don't know if there's any questions on the grocery tax before we move on to the water rates that anybody has, or wants to...
No. I don't have any.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you say it's estimated 600 to 750, is that actually what we've been receiving from the state, roughly?
So we can't...
Or do you have any idea? I mean, how does, how does the state get us money, I guess?
Yeah, so when the state collects the money, and say we get it from Woodman's, we just get one line that says, Woodman's brought in X amount of dollars. The state also does give us some statistics where they show, and they break it down further by, here's how much is for, you know, automobile sales, here's how much is for restaurants, or, so we have some, we have some statistics we get from there. The only problem with it is, though, is everything that comes in from Woodman's goes into one line, so whether you're buying groceries, or you're buying like something that isn't necessarily a grocery item, I can't, I don't have that, so that's why we give it the range saying, it could be this high, it could be, you know, this low. So right now, it's just our best guess, since I don't know exactly, but it should be pretty significant based on that.
And if you remember from our referendum conversations, when you go to Woodman's, there's usually two sales tax lines on your receipt. One, as Jason said, is the general sales tax, so if you buy shampoo at Woodman's, it's going to be taxed at the 8% sales tax rate. If you buy an apple at Woodman's, it's going to have the 1.75, of which we get 1%.
Yeah, so even though I say 600,000 to 750, I mean, we receive more money from that from, say, like a Woodman's, so this is a reduction, our best guess, based on kind of what we're seeing out there as to, as how much we think it's going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So for the water rates, early in 2023, we came with a proposed five-year rate plan, which would have taken the rates from $3.70 of what they were back then, to $5.95 over a five-year period. We kind of phased in that 50% cumulative rate increase. Just based on what we're looking, seeing with operating costs going up and the capital Um, just based on what we're look, seeing with operating costs going up and the capital improvements needed for the water fund, we're looking to accelerate that. Um, if you look at now, currently, that highlighted one, we're at four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Um, next year, uh, according to that, uh, five-year plan we originally put out there, we'd be at five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, what we're proposing is to, is to jump down to the five dollar and ninety-five cent, um, rate fee. We would be keeping that sixteen dollar, uh, minimum charge for the first three thousand unchanged, um, so we don't expect that to, to increase. Um, over the, over the past three years, sixteen percent of our bills are charged just the sixteen, um, dollar minimum. So, there's a good portion of, of people that don't use more than three thousand gallons of water, um, every, every two months. Um, where that would compare to some of our comparables, see, our five dollar ninety-five cents would be one of the lowest. We've got Sugar Grove at four ninety-one and Batavia's at five sixty-four. Um, everybody else is higher except South Elgin. But if you look at South Elgin, they charge an eighty-one dollar, uh, base fee compared to our sixteen dollar. Um, so if you just basically say, here's everybody's rates and what their base, their base charges are, everybody takes the eleven thousand gallon, just average of what we're seeing here, what our bills be. You know, the average bill of sixty-three dollars and sixty cents would be the cheapest of all our surrounding comparables. Um, and I will point out, there are one, two, three, so us, South Elgin, they give you the first four thousand gallons as part of your base charge. Your fill gives you, theirs is on cubic feet, but they, so they basically give you twenty-six hundred gallons, and we give three thousand gallons. Um, everybody else on here, it's the base charge, plus you get charged for every, every thousand gallons you use. So, there's no, there's no, uh, first three thousands included with you. Um, so when we look at that first three thousand, um, that basically comes out to five dollars and thirty-three cents per one thousand. Um, so it is cheaper. It's basically a discount off the five ninety-five we're, we're proposing. Um, so we are still very competitive, um, in our overall water rates, even though we're, we're proposing such a significant increase this year. Um, we do, are working on the water system master plan. Um, it's expected to be completed hopefully this spring or early summer. Um, that plan is gonna recommend an additional future capital and suggested water rates based on what they're seeing. Um, so what we're doing is we're trying to get out ahead of it because we know there's, there's a significant, and we're gonna get into some of the projects here in a few slides. But there's a lot of things upcoming, um, that we're gonna need money for on the water, just to, as a lot of it's becoming aging infrastructure. Um, our water fund reserve balance, at the end of this year, we're projecting at six point two million dollars. And then looking at next year, it's gonna probably drop down to three point five million dollars. Um, we are, um, part of the projections we're gonna show you is, there's a, uh, large water, uh, user connection fee of one point six million dollars we're working into the budget. Or, and, and then the one point six million dollars is, um, generally, in the past, whenever we've had additional money, we've pushed that money over to the capital projects fund and just kinda bumped up our capital projects funds. But what we're doing this year is we're saying, let's take that money, any additional money we have in our general fund, um, and let's push that over to the water fund to help kinda, um, build up that water reserve and keep rates a little bit lower than we could. So, uh, we're doing little changes here with what we're doing with our reserve, our, our surplus balances. Um, and the budget we put together, um, does include the five ninety-five, uh, rates.
I think one thing to, to look at before Jason goes into these slides, too, is when you talk about the effective, the effect of a tax or a rate on a homeowner, when you look at a property tax, let's say, versus the water bills, raising our property tax levy by a few percent on an average home might only equate to five to ten dollars on their tax bill for the year. Whereas a water rate increase, it could be five to ten dollars for every two months. So, the water rate is actually the thing that affects people's pockets more directly, and we've always been at the low end, which we're at the lowest. Um, but as Jason's about to show you, when you have these projects coming up, some of those towns that are on there are switching to Lake Michigan. So, their water rates are already much higher than ours, and then they're gonna go up exponentially when they start putting in the infrastructure for Lake Michigan water. Ours, we have mandates, just like every one of those towns, in twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-seven, we're gonna have to start replacing lead service lines. And we spent two hours in a room today with Brian and his staff going over the cost of that program and what it means to us. And those are things that we're mandated to do over a fifteen-year period. We have to replace them. So, as Jason will show you, some of these projects are on the horizon, are necessary, have-to-do projects. The good news is, uh, the board enacted the large user connection fees, and we actually, uh, heard today that one of those large users has, um, they've reviewed our terms and they, we've come to, uh, a tentative agreement in, in terms. So, we'll be, actually be bringing that, if not the next meeting, the meeting after, for the board to review. And we, the other large user we're working with has also, in principle, looked at the terms and agreed to them. So, we just have to now bring them to the board for review.
All right, so here we just put some, uh, projections together, uh, of the water fund over the next five years. Um, what we have here is just that original plan, um, that we had showed you. I, and then basically after that plan, uh, we reached the five years, we just assume five percent increases after, for water, for water rates. Um, and then basically all the personnel and operating expenses, we just assume are gonna go up anywhere from two to five percent a year. Um, what you see here is the, um, bottom bar here is our personnel costs, our operating costs of this green, and then the debt is the blue, and then anything in this purple is our capital, with this red line being our, our, um, our revenues. And I mentioned that, uh, large water user fee is why it kinda goes here and then drops down the next year and then kinda goes up every year. But what you see here is, is we have just enough money essentially to cover our personnel operating and debt, leaving just a little left for capital until we're eating into some of the reserve to pay for this capital that goes over. Um, kinda looking at this, at this way in the projections, that kinda leaves us anywhere from four to six hundred thousand dollars annually to do capital. Um, so what kinda would, will leave us to is, is Steve mentioned the lead, the lead service line projects, um, looking at basically having to prioritize and say, what capital are we doing this year? And if we have a large project, having to basically draw it out, maybe split it over a few years because, um, there's just, wouldn't be enough money on a, on an annual basis to, to do those capital projects. It, it kinda make it tough for us. Now, basically doing the same thing, but then increasing it to five, to the five ninety-five the next year, and then just five percent, just a five percent every year after at least, we start to give us a little more room here to where, um, we basically maintain our operations, those first three bars, and then it leaves us anywhere from a seven hundred thousand to a million dollars annually to do capital. So, then we can start doing, um, some additional projects. Maybe if we have some larger projects, um, gives us a little more room, um, with the revenue, available revenues to do that. Um, as you see this capital, you know, why it's so, so large in these couple of years here is, is the water tower, uh, cost at seven point six million dollars, or seven point eight million dollars for the water towers eating up a significant amount of the, the reserve balance we have on hand. So, you know, after next year, once that's built, our reserve's probably gonna be the lowest it's been in, in a few years until we try to build it back up. And I mentioned the projects over the next five years, that seven point eight million dollar water tower we have, um, we have some rehabilitation of, um, the East Water Tower, lead service line, which we're thinking it could be three million or more, more, um, to do all those lead service lines. Um, we have water well improvements, and we've done a few over the last, you know, handful of years, but we have well seven and eight coming up. I'm installing a generator and transfer switch on well eight, and then some east and west, uh, treatment plant, uh, improvements since those are, uh, aging facilities and, and a lot of replacements there on, on the, uh, the infrastructure.
Part of the conversation, when we have our, our full study done by EEI, hopefully by the summer, where they do a presentation of our water system, and they go into it in more depth, you know, a long-term plan, you know, over the next twenty years or so. Here are the things you're gonna have to do at your treatment plant, and here's all the upgrades. You gotta remember, the treatment plants are getting to be about twenty years old. So, you know, they're gonna need more than just routine maintenance. They're gonna actually need some replacements. And with the lead service lines, you see that three million dollar number, that could just be the number to replace the private lead service lines and some of our public service lines. That doesn't include the areas that we would also be replacing water main. So, we looked at a project in one neighborhood where we, the neighborhood that we had the most lead service lines in, and that project was somewhere upwards of seven million dollars to do the whole project in that neighborhood because of the amount of public lead lines. And if you touch one on, if you touch the public line, there's, you know, you pretty much have to replace the whole line at once. And then you're replacing the water main at one time, too, so you don't have to go back there. We're looking at ways that we can reduce things like maybe lining the water main instead of replacing it. But right now, we're just looking at, that's just the cost for the lead service lines alone.
So, that's all we had, um, I prepared for the, the water rates. I don't know if there's any questions or things we wanna go over additionally regarding the rates?
No, I think it's fine. Lead it up pretty well. Everybody's water rates are going up throughout the whole valley.
I think it makes sense, but, uh, I don't love jumping straight to the top. I'd like to see more of a gradual turn towards that.
I had that same question. What's the rationale for that?
It's really, it's really just, um, the, the available cap, the capital. And, um, as we mentioned, that, uh, the water tower, when it's coming in at seven point eight million dollars on that, ate up a, a very big chunk of any of the money that we have, uh, within the water fund now. Um, and even just on the operation side, I mean, stuff like, you know, the utility bills for the treatment plants and the wells. I mean, that, those are going up over five, you know, paying four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars annually on just electricity to, to run those things, like supplies, like, all of it's just increasing significantly. So, uh, we're seeing large increases there to where we just gotta keep, start keeping up. And, you know, when I, when I mentioned, you know, these, these purple bars here of, of keeping up with how much our operations are going up, but then also leaving us with enough room to where we can do some of these capital projects, and we're not having to pick and choose and say, well, we've only got two hundred thousand dollars this year. What are we gonna do on the capital side? So, um, it's really just giving us flexibility and making sure our water system stays up to date.
This, these numbers are based on just projects that we know are in the pipeline for sure. Prior to any of this water rate discussion, our water superintendent, Adam, sat down with things that they have on the horizon. And I wanna say the number, uh, his estimated number was over thirty million dollars in improvements.
Yeah, it was a lot more.
So, we're not showing everything because we're just showing you the next five years or so of the picture. When EEI comes with their update, it's, it's gonna be a large number when they come in to say, this is what you have to do to your water system in the next twenty years. Because we're at that life cycle point where we're starting to grow, so that's why you had to build another tower. You know, cost of steel is astronomical, so, you know, the tower was, uh, real expensive. And then you're looking at replacements, things that are twenty years old in these treatment plants. Without those replacements, that's what purifies our water. So, if they fail, we don't have the ability to provide clean water.
Even with the increase, we're still in a, lower than the rest of municipalities or surrounding areas, right?
Yeah, we have, even with the increase, um, we would have the, the lowest projected bill, you know, based on eleven thousand gallons of, of usage at sixty-three dollars. I mean, it goes up anywhere from Geneva, um, a hundred and thirty dollars, you know, for the same, same water usage.
Look at Aurora's rates.
Yeah.
And then are you proposing five percent increases every year after that, too, then?
That, just for this model, I just, I threw a number in there just to kinda, just to kinda keep it up with personnel and operating costs. We haven't, I mean, as part of the EEI study that we mentioned, they would go through and, like, as they're lining up our capital, they would say, here's a recommended rate study as well. So, you know, we'd probably build that off of what capital we're gonna do, what EEI says when they actually looked at our system. So, um, right now, that's just a placeholder number I put in there just to kinda keep it pace with, with all the other things that we have in the study or in the model.
A lot of this was based on the fact that we know we have lead service lines coming up, and that's a mandatory start date. Um, so you have that, and we just wanted to make sure that we built up enough reserves. For instance, we cut, uh, I think it was a five hundred thousand dollar water main project out of the budget this year to try to stay on task. And that's a water main that breaks several times a year, but it's in an area that it doesn't really affect, uh, residents. It affects a business. So, we just said, you know what, it's hard to get to, but we're just gonna have to repair it. We're not replacing it this year. So, you know, we look at these things and we're trying to make sure that we, we keep up the best we can. As far as, you know, the rates go, like I said before, this, I get it. This is where, this is where people actually see it directly hit their pocketbooks the most because this is, I'm paying this bill every two months and I'm seeing the increases. Um, I just talked to a resident who moved into town recently, and they were, it was, it was funny because they asked why our rates were so low because the last town they lived in also had Fox Metro, and she said, my bill was so much higher in my last town, it was almost the same as Fox Metro. And I said, that's because your water rate's different in this town. And that was a shock. So, it actually had gone down like thirty dollars on her bill moving to our town. So, I mean, we are pretty low, and like I said before, uh, Jason mentioned, because we get the first three thousand, seniors are people who don't typically use a lot of water. Right now, they're just paying the base charge of sixteen dollars. This bill of, of eleven thousand.
You're not talking about me.
This base bill on eleven thousand is because that's what an average residential bill is, and, and that is the effective apples-to-apples comparison when you.
I think it's, I think it's, uh, we're able to live with that. Uh, it's still, uh, below most of the other municipalities around us, so I'm okay with the whole idea.
I mean, if the board has any thoughts, I mean, now would be, uh, the time to, to raise it, and so we know what we're doing for the final budget numbers.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think raising it up now is fine. I'm more concerned projecting out five, six years at five percent a year. I mean, you're gonna be talking dollars, you know, two, three dollars in five, six years. So, that would be my bigger concern, but for now, I'm.
And I, and I think, Tristan, I totally understand that, and, and one of the things that I think we wanna do is look at the way we charge water because that might be another way we do it. So, if you look here, going back to the way that some towns have a base charge, in addition to, you know, water usage, there could be a straight infrastructure for you or whatnot. We can look at ways to do that. I was hoping that EEI would have had their study done. Um, it was running a little bit long. We wanted it to have it so that we can line it up with the budget because we didn't have it, but we know that the projects are in the pipeline for sure already. I mean, we just, like I said before, it's, it's kinda the cardinal sin to transfer general fund money to the water fund. But we're doing everything we can to try to minimize any impact to residents. Um, but I agree, if we can find a way to take the projections from EEI and then figure out what makes sense to do it over time in a methodical way, we can probably minimize the impact the best we can.
I wanna say, um, you know, years, years ago, we didn't project or forecast anything, and that's probably why we're in some of this predicament. So, I think it's great that you are looking down the road, five years, twenty years, and, you know, it's still a good deal. Nothing's free. And, you know, we all certainly enjoy our water, you know, buy a case of water at Woodman's and see what that costs. I mean, you're getting, mm, six dollars for whatever, thousand gallons. I mean, that's a good deal. And, um, I think we always pride ourselves on our great water and, um, you know, like, see it continue.
You gotta have it, and then prices are going up everywhere, so.
And if you don't do it now, we'll have to maybe bite the bolt three years from now and go eight percent or whatever it is. But it's like, we, we need to probably start doing that, you know, unfortunately, but.
The good news is, I'm sort of, you gotta end with some good news, right? So, the good news is operational cost. Okay, I was gonna, okay, let's start with some bad news. The bad news was electric prices came back really high. So, we bid them out this year, and they went up, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's another twenty percent increase over what we normally pay. And, and we added a water person this year, but knowing all the development we're coming in, all the products we have in the pipeline, and all the new testing requirements for copper and lead from the EPA, and then what we did was we offset some of the money that was in the budget for things like, uh, hydrant maintenance and whatnot, things that we had sixty thousand dollars worth of budgeted funds. And we offset it with that full-time program. Brian provided me a list of a rotation on how we're gonna have our water laborers do these programs in-house. So, what we're trying to do is, I think we're at an operational point in this budget. For years, we have slowly built up our staffing levels to be at a place that we can effectively get to the goals that the board and, you know, everybody would like to see in our strategic plan. I don't foresee us adding water personnel anytime soon after this. And in addition, we've hit that critical number of plow trucks and whatnot in our public works department. So, now we're looking at their utility trucks. Not every new employee is gonna get the, you know, the updated, more expensive utility truck. We can start buying standard pickup trucks because we have enough of those utility trucks to go around.
Very good.
So, what is the percentage difference from where we're at to where we would go if we jumped from?
Five ninety-five.
If you go back, it's the actual rate that it's supposed to go. Right now, it's at four seventy-nine, but per this schedule, it actually was gonna be five twenty-seven beginning June one. So, the difference would be five ninety-five minus five twenty-seven, which I'm doing right now.
We still should know the full percentage, though.
Uh, I have it as thirteen percent.
Yep.
Twelve point nine, yeah.
And that's the difference between five twenty-seven to five ninety-five?
Yeah.
What's the difference between four seventy-nine to five ninety-five?
Twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It is, but once again, this was, this five-year plan was in place to go to five twenty-seven, June one.
Hey, anything else?
Um, Jason?
No.
Steve?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. That's the last item. Um, mostly adjourned.
So, moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's the same. All right, have a good evening.